What's happening, Di?
All set up and rolling.
We came out of room again last night.
Yeah.
Sound was great.
They actually lost internet.
Yeah, they had something on.
I was trying to figure out, I was just trying to go back because I missed you. And they were talking about the inspection inspector. I lost, I think, more than I had. I lost power, I had a power.
Can I see when you went over to the guy?
I was like looking for a plug. He was hogging them all. He plugged me in.
.................................
Please, sit. Welcome. Our special town board meeting agenda, October 22nd, 2019, 6:00 PM, Town Hall, 110 Bracken Road. I'm Rod Woodshill, the town attorney supervisor.
Cindy West, town board.
Thank you.
Dan Dempsey, town board.
Sharon Nichols, town clerk.
Stephanie Tunick, town attorney.
Sherry Mullen, town board.
Mark Hoyt, town board.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. This is a continuation of our public hearing for Blue Water Industrial Partners' Project Sailfish Zone Change. Where to start? If anybody has any public comment, we'll start from the front row, work our way to the back, work this row, work our way to the back. Ready? Any representatives here from Blue Water want to say anything first?
Yeah, just some short remarks if you don't mind.
Sure, definitely.
Before we start, I just, I wanted to just note for the record that the town received a written protest petition from certain property owners under town law 265. I do have copies for the review. Do you want copies?
We have copies, yeah.
Okay. We have not confirmed validity of this. My office and the assessor's office is, was working to determine that, but we cannot confirm validity of it as we received it yesterday. So, just for the record.
Okay, thank you, appreciate those remarks. My name is Dave Everett, I'm counsel for Blue Water. I have with me tonight Don Chase and Steve Butte, who are principals of Blue Water. We're happy to answer any questions about the project with the proposed map amendment. Obviously, you know, this is the fifth public hearing the town board is having on this matter, so you're fully familiar with the zoning map amendment. I'm not going to spend a lot of time going over it. It was discussed in detail with the DEIS and the FEIS, as well as in the planning board's findings. But I did want to just provide the board with some updates about some things that have happened since the last public hearing that you folks had held. So, since that time, the planning board had closed its final public hearing, and as the lead agency under SECRE, it went ahead and adopted a written SECRE finding statement, basically drawing conclusions on the project's potential environmental impacts. That finding statement was over 100 pages long. You folks received a copy of it as an involved agency. It was very extensive and basically concluded that the project is not going to have any significant adverse impacts on the environment, or the rezoning will not have any significant adverse impacts on the environment, and any significant impacts have been mitigated or avoided to the maximum extent practical, which is what is required by the law. And the board, the planning board, looked in detail at the proposed rezoning, and they've got many pages of findings related to that. I'm not going to go through those with you. Just wanted to read one passage from their findings, which basically says, "As shown above, over the last 30 years, the town's planning documents have all recommended the project site be used for industrial development. The project and the proposed zoning map amendment are consistent with these recommendations. The project expands the size of the existing I-2 zoning district, decreases the size of the existing IB zoning district along 17K to create a narrow strip of commercial land along the road, consistent with the existing configuration of the IB zoning on adjacent lots. Excuse me, the strip of commercial uses along the road will buffer the industrial uses, which would be set back off the road, all in accordance with the town's master plan. The site is an ideal location for the project with excellent access to Interstate 84, New York State 747, and Route 17K. The interchange of Route 747 and I-84 was upgraded and approved recently to facilitate industrial and commercial growth in the area around the interchange, including the project site. The project is consistent with those improvements. There's also easy access to Stewart International Airport nearby. Several previous development efforts were proposed at the project site to take advantage of the location, including other proposed warehouse uses." So, you know, I think that the planning board got this right. So, this is a perfect location for this project. At this time, the site has been zoned for industrial purposes. It's mostly zoned for industrial purposes now. The project is going to be set back significantly from all the surrounding neighbors. There are limited residential uses nearby. The project is going to be basically bounded on three sides by three state highways. It's going to take advantage of the recent upgrades to the interchange to allow for industrial development. It keeps truck traffic off of local roads, because they're just going to use that interchange, and that's basically what the traffic study had found. And the project's also going to create, as the planning board found, over 1,000 jobs and significant tax revenues. So, those are the findings of your planning board, and we'd like you to take note of those if you're so inclined. The other thing, as far as developments are concerned, I just wanted to let you know, and as I had said last time in my remarks, there were over 30 agencies, federal, state, and local agencies, which reviewed this project. Many of them made comments which actually resulted in some changes to the project, which made it better and improved it for purposes of the town and for purposes of the environment. About a dozen of those agencies have already issued permits and approvals for the project. I went through those when I was before the board at the last public hearing. I'm not going to go through them again, but the ones that have issued approvals recently since we last met are the following. So, on September 23rd, the fire district, Coltonham Fire District, they basically concluded that all their concerns had been addressed, and they had no more issues with respect to the fire, with respect to the project and its impact on fire protection. On September 25th, the Orange County Department of Health issued a certificate of approval for the project's water system. In September 16th, the Orange County Planning Department issued a determination that the proposed zoning map amendment will not have any significant intermunicipal or county-wide impacts, and didn't have any objections to the proposed rezoning. This is the second time that the county had looked at this matter, and they issued the same conclusion almost a year previous when you guys had referred it to them. And then lastly, on October 4th, the DEC issued the following permits related to the project. There was a freshwater wetlands permit, water quality certification disturbance permit, all allowing for the project's construction on the project's access drive under Route 747. And they also issued a permit, discharge permit, for the project's small wastewater treatment plant. So, based upon, you know, the extensive record that the planning board had done, it was over 8,000 pages of environmental studies in the DEIS and the FEIS, as well as their extensive findings, and the extensive public comments that you folks have received, and the inclusion of the SECRE process, we feel that at this time it would be appropriate, after listening to the remaining public comments tonight, to close the public hearing, and that we would encourage you to vote to approve the map amendment at one of your upcoming meetings. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll continue with public hearing. Like I said, we're going to do a five-minute stand timer, lovely. And we'll start this row. Anybody will work our way to the back, same with this row, work our way to the back.
Good evening. My name is RJ Smith, and in the course of the months of working on this project and the different board deliberating, there's been discussion time and again with regard to the town lacking a comprehensive plan. The town actually has a comprehensive plan. The one currently in effect was adopted in 1988, and then revised, updated, and amended in 2010. However, prior to the 2010 amendment, there was an extensive effort, it took years of work. At the time, Susan was supervisor, in part under her leadership, a comprehensive plan committee was formed.
No, that was wrong. Under block. Get that correct.
I have your name as supervisor.
No, that was adopted.
Sue Lee.
Well, he's telling lies.
You can address it in your comments after that.
The, I stand corrected. The comprehensive plan was adopted when Susan was supervisor. And members of this board were on the board at the time. Members of the board, the planning board, past and previous and current board members, was on the comprehensive committee, as well as board members, members from the community. Several years of work went into the comprehensive plan. It is just that, comprehensive. Unfortunately, the courts found that the plan was deficient and lacking of provisions for affordable housing. In my work, I argue, I don't necessarily agree with the courts. The plan provides for affordable housing to be in and around the villages. The reason being is that was the location where there were services to accommodate higher-density housing that would make it affordable. And the plan even says that the town is receptive to annexation into the villages of lands around it to facilitate that. Probably to amend this, to make it satisfactory to the court, could have been, I believe, as easy as saying, identifying specific properties around the villages, say, "These are the properties," have the zoning, and said, "If there's water and sewer, this is the density, if there isn't, this is the density." The town would have complied with what I believe to be the deficiency the court found. However, there was no issue with regard to the non-residential components of the plan, not in the courts, or for my recollection, and I attended a number of public hearings in the public. And I want to provide for the board, each a copy of that. The comprehensive plan, the 2004 comprehensive plan, provides for the subject property to be zoned I-2, which is what is being requested, with a gateway overlay zone to preserve the roadscape on Route 17K and 747, which is what this project provides for. So, even though the courts found one efficiency in this very, very comprehensive plan, there's nothing saying that this board or the town cannot rely on the years of work that was done in its deliberation. Accordingly, you request that you address your decision-making process utilizing this work and adopt the plan and act accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kim.
Hi.
Welcome.
Since you opened it up.
Just name, name and address.
Susan Cuckerman.
Thank you.
Mark Hoyt, Richard Hoyt, Jeff Chris, Bill Kernan, were on the master plan committee. They turned the plan over to the town board.
Richard Hoyt was not.
He was on it as the attorney for it. I have the document, okay? He was the attorney on it, same thing. And on his closing letter to me after I took office, he wrote that the master plan needed to include that it has to be updated every five to seven years, okay? Instead, in 2008, I guess you were on the board, and Hayes was on the board. I don't know if you were there, but you got rid of it. And this thing about the lawsuit, yeah, there was a lawsuit, but there probably would have been others if someone decided to file a lawsuit. The plan is a mess. It's in bits and pieces. We all know that. And case in point is, did any of you, I know the DOT didn't, all these projects, did you ever lay them out and add up all the tractor trailers, all the cars from all the projects that are before you right now? I don't think so, because the residents did it, but we've never gotten it from you. And saying that other things, like the DOT approved it and the Board of Health approved it, that's the last thing before nothing. If we don't have our own laws in place to protect us, it goes, it gets bounced to those entities. And they're just looking to make sure you're not going to, like, throw raw sewage out the window. It's ridiculous. This thing was put to bed, somebody resurrected it. You need a comprehensive plan, and this is site-specific rezoning. A plan was done in 2007 that said that corridor should specifically design itself to build out around the Colton Mansion roads. This is site-specific rezoning, and I recommend you all wait until you get real traffic studies, and until the property owner that's been there paying taxes for decades is happy with it. You can't do this to people that are already here, homeowners and businesses. It's wrong. And I'd like to see these studies and who wrote them, with all these numbers and these numerical values, on why we have to eat this, when we don't even know who this company is. We don't even know what they're going to be shipping in and out. That's wrong. Site-specific rezoning is wrong. You do this, you look at this, then you decide.
Thank you. Officer. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Baker. I'm an attorney in Albany with Young Summer, representing Barbara Lerner and Lerner Padlock Realty. Let me just deal with a few housekeeping things first. We did submit the protest petition yesterday for that. I appreciate that it's being verified, that we've met the threshold. I'm sure we have. It would be easier for you to verify that it reached a threshold if you had required the applicant to submit as part of their application for the rezoning, the required calculation for the percentage of land within 100 feet of the boundary. It is a specific requirement in your zoning code for a zoning petition. We have requested that information. I don't believe it has ever been provided and has ever done. So, that was one of the deficiencies in that. I'd also note, just also for the record, we still have an outstanding FOIL request out from two weeks, which has never been formally acknowledged, nor has the documents been responded to or provided, so we would like that to be done. But I want to talk more about the specifics of what your role here is. I know you've been hearing a lot of comments about this for a long time. It's been going through the planning board, and it's been going through the review. But I want to, and, you know, if I'm lecturing you, I apologize, because I lecture and I teach zoning law regularly about things. But your role here on the zoning, this understanding is you have a right to decide no. That this is a bad idea for the town. No one has a right to have their property rezoned. They come in, they say, "I'd like it rezoned. I'd like to change from residential to industrial or something else." But you have the right to say no, even if they've gone through the review with this, because you can decide. You are the elected members of this community, and you decide what is the right thing to be done. There is no such thing as an Article 78 to challenge the denial of a rezoning because it was arbitrary and capricious. You don't need a rational basis. You can't deny it on a constitutionally prohibited basis, that you don't like those kind of people or something. That would be wrong. That's illegal. But you can simply just say, "This doesn't make sense. This is not in the vision for our town." And you should say that, because in their FEIS and in the finding statement that was adopted by the planning board, as Mr. Everett alluded to before, they talk about how this is appropriate with whatever you have as a comprehensive plan, picking and choosing from different documents and say, "Well, it's close to the highways. It's close to the major infrastructure. This is an area where we always envisioned having warehouses and distribution centers." This is not a normal warehouse or distribution center. This is a fulfillment center. It says so in the findings. A fulfillment center is not a traditional warehouse. A fulfillment center is for Amazon and for other e-commerce providers. A fulfillment center is where tractor-trailers come in, bringing large quantities of materials, and smaller trucks go out, distributing to the area. And we all know what Amazon is moving towards, next day and same-day delivery, so that they can follow the niche, and they're very successful at it, of making it easier for people to buy goods. That's fine. They have a right to do that. That's their business. But the town has no obligation to facilitate that, because if you're going to facilitate that by giving a rezoning, you are telling your local retail businesses, "Then we're going to make it easier for people to compete against you in a manner that you can't compete, because the mom and pop and the small retailers, and even the larger retailers, which present the base of your tax base, are going to suffer because you allowed Amazon to come in and facilitate selling their goods and distributing to everyone in the town." And not only are you going to be facilitating doing that by a zone change, they're requesting a massive tax abatement, so that for the first five years, they don't pay any increased property taxes over what's there now. And then, over the course of the 15 years, which they calculated with the IDA application, they get a total tax break of over $25 million. Now, why in God's name would a town provide a tax break to one of the richest corporations in the world to facilitate them undercutting the prices in the businesses and the business spaces of your local businesses? You're giving them a tax break. You're not giving a tax break to anyone else. You're changing the zoning to facilitate something that doesn't benefit people here locally. You're not providing important jobs to the town. You're providing barely minimum wage jobs or jobs in an area that already is pretty much at full employment. So, this is a basis that I ask you to look at this and say, "This is not what this town needs." You haven't updated your comprehensive plan in a comprehensive manner in a long time. You should simply, you don't even need to do a moratorium in terms of saying, "We're not going to do more zoning." You can simply say on this one, "This doesn't make sense. This is not our image for the town. This isn't good for the town. It's going to hurt our businesses. We're not in favor of tax base, boy, and I'm not going to do this." And you can do that. That's why you are the elected representatives to say what this is. And I keep hitting on that point, because it's an important point, is don't feel that you are bulldozed or bullied and say, "Oh, I wrote this FEIS. It's got a lot of pages in it. It says everything's great, and you've got to do it, and everything's hunky-dory, and there are no impacts." And all these other agencies have given their approval. Those agencies...
Your five minutes is up.
Yep. Never even turn.
We have a digital one.
Oh.
Because that one was halfway, and we have a good...
I'll wrap up then. I just urge you, those permits and those agencies, they look at narrow issues where people do have a property right to get a permit if they arguably meet those criteria. You're not under that same obligation. You're able to say, "This is not right for this town." And because, and I urge you to show the courage on this as you're going forward, because of that protest petition, four of you have to approve this application. It's not simply a simple majority. So, I ask for two of you to show the courage to say, "This is not our vision of the town, and we're going to plan this for everyone in the town, not an enormous multinational which is demanding a tax break." Thank you.
Thank you. Next, anyone? Second row? Welcome.
Good afternoon. Good evening. I'm Barbara Lerner. With Jeff, I am a property owner on the corner of 747 and 17K. In the finding statements and in their application, they claim that this would leave a developable strip of IB along 17K, and that's, but it's false. Over a third of the portion of this unchanged zone is wetland, cannot be developed. Another third is the wastewater treatment plant, and that cannot be developed. And the balance is encumbered roughly a third by the bioretention code. So, the premise that this leaves developable property along 17K is inaccurate. A zone change really only helps the applicant in allowing this project to move forward. It also prevents all future development in that entire corridor. Right now, the airport, new management, is looking to bring in business, high-tech, and completely, businesses that are unrelated to warehousing, to encourage that type of growth in this community. That is the primary access point to Stewart Airport. This project encumbers 100% of the developable land between 84 and 17K. There is no other land that can be developed other than my little strip. And I probably will not be granted a full-access driveway due to the traffic. My primary driveway is 650 feet away from theirs, and as is, it's difficult to turn left. The traffic impact statement and study counts were done prior to my tenant being, coming back to our property. Polish Talex had relocated to Walden and returned. I notified the planning board and the applicant that they would be back in in spring, but the planning board and engineer decided, determined, I should say, that the studies were appropriate and accurate when they were done in February. There are over 100 people that enter and exit that driveway every day, in addition to their smaller trucks. It is becoming a more and more dangerous intersection. By inhibiting the, a different form of business in that corridor, you really change the character of the community. We already have a warehousing and heavy-traffic zone on the other side of Montgomery. It would be nice to be able to encourage development of something different. We need a more diverse economy to be able to survive into the next 20 or 30 years. There are a few articles from the Patterns for Progress, specifically the one for stagnant population growth, low-wage jobs, and the high cost of living. It's the new reality in the Mid Hudson Valley. Another one of their articles is called, "Why Young Professionals Are Fleeing the Hudson Valley." It would be great if you really took into account what these studies do represent. The Orange County Planning Report on Climate Change is also very telling, as they discuss vast amounts of impervious surface and cutting of old-growth forest. The Mid Hudson Weather Report also discusses current precipitation for our specific area that is somewhat different from the 25 and 50 and 100-year storms that hit our region as a whole. Their reports identify the Hudson Valley and this location in specific, being quite different when you're surrounded by different mountain ranges. This project is a game changer, and there's no turning back once you grant these approvals. There's no recovery from the environment, societal, social, or economic changes that this project will create. This is like the canary in the coal mine, and we really should be very aware and very cognizant of the changes that this project, or any project like this, will bring.
Second row?
Here's Hudson North.
Welcome.
Beverly Mertz. You all know me. If somebody came to my house and wanted to change my rules, I have the authority to say no. You, as a town board, have the authority to say no. To a company, we are not really even sure of who the tenant is going to be, they will not. They have refused to name the tenant. Why? I would like to know why. You have, confidentiality has nothing to do with it. If you're playing in my sandlot, I get to know your name. You have the authority to stop this. You have the authority to keep our sandbox the right way, the way that we envision it. I like to make sandcastles in my sandbox, not have drones dumping stuff on the porch. I like to be able to play with the sand, move it around in my hands, take a walk, go have a picnic, bring in some good food, listen to some good music, be able to get on a road and just go down to New York City and have the time of my life. All of that is, can be envisioned in this area. But if you change the zone, we're stuck. And who knows, in fifteen years, if the tenant's even going to be there? Now we have a big, empty warehouse with nothing to show for it, not even the ratables.
Come on up.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. My name is Shariza Hockes, and I am a resident. Just some plods here as you go forward. And I have said before, as a lawyer has, you don't have to do this, and you have much to consider. I heard the meet, the candidates' night. It was my thirtieth anniversary last night, so I couldn't attend. But I did listen in between cooking. But aside, I don't want to use my five minutes for my life, except my life and my residents, my fellow residents, including those on the board, are going to be directly affected by the choices that you make going forward. You are trying to evaluate, and I understand, the cost and the efficiencies of infrastructure such as stores. You've made that as a very clear choice in where you go forward, and I respect that. However, what I think we need to do, in the face of your acknowledgement as the board, as a supervisor, because each and every one of you have a vote here, it's just not on the supervisor to make these choices. So you're all responsible as we go forward on what your voice and what you determine. But that septic system, whatever it is, with a comprehensive plan that you all are fully aware that you need to engage in, is overdue. And the residents, at least those that are being vocal, they care about, and they want to see done before major changes such as a zone change occurs. And in part of that, we can address things like where it should be, the septic, the water, and what is the best kind that can serve this community, not the one that perhaps Project Sailfish will put in. Because for that, you really don't have a hand. On top of that, the ratables based on the IDA, seven-hundred-and-seventy-five temporary workers, right? Not FTE, meaning full-time employment. Seven-seventy-five to twenty-five professional. Really? How much of our youth are really going to go into a warehouse? They'll probably be more automated. The second year, they say, "No growth." That was up to them to fill out. They didn't. Now, I understand the union is behind me, and what they want more than anything is good-quality jobs. They want to continue their life and the style that they're trying to build or have built. They don't want to travel to Texas or California or wherever their agreements take them, and I respect that. But I don't respect the fact that our own town board may not allow us to try to have that same thing created within our personal town, our lives. Twenty-five professional at about sixty-five thousand dollars a year? That's it for this? And no say in the septic? And they also say that they took in in the FEIS and DEIS. Well, I know the Land Master suit too wasn't just about affordable housing. It was a part of the secret that was removed because it seemed to be common sense where wetlands or a lake that could never be utilized be considered and not considered in the quality of the land for the building. In other words, it makes sense. You're not going to put a warehouse in the middle of a lake. You have to use qualitative land. Well, in the zoning law, it says thirty percent for an I-two. There's all contained. But if you were to take what they consider in our, including that wetland that was part of the Land Master suit because it removed the secret process, well, common sense dictates that's really not a part of your land. The secret process is supposed to cover that. So how is that really covered when that's not firmament to build on? So they do have to come forward and ask for this zone. Because part of the law also says it has to be right-sized for the zone, and it also has to allow for expansion, which I don't see where that can happen in this case. So ratables, direction, and what the residents want. I think it's a travesty to force ourselves into more warehouses with the same level. I understand the reasoning, but there was also said at the candidates' night, seven-hundred-and-twenty residents to equal the amount of income revenue for the school in the town that would occur to offset it. Should these two large warehouses not come? If you examine the millennials today, they're having maybe one to none in kids. So even if you built those seven-hundred-and-twenty, nobody said that they would need septic or water from the town. So what are we selling out here for a septic that we have no control for? For a land that's truly not being considered in its true size for acceptability? So much so that they need each and every one of you to change the future of this town? I see so much more, and I said that before. Thank you. I'll let the supervisor tell me when I'm done.
In the job, please.
Thank you. Because it's happened before and often in minutes as you run the meeting. I don't think that's correct.
You're over the meeting, but-
I know. But you're the supervisor that should be calling it out, not an advocate. So to finish up here, and I'm done, and I was thirty-third ARS, so I was pleased to hear you were part of ARS. But our job is rescue and recovery. There will be no rescue. There will be no recovery. I know what you're looking for. I think there's a better way, smarter choices, much smarter. The future is not in a warehouse. Nobody wants those. That's why they're being pushed here. Thank you.
Thank you. Third row? Come on up.
Welcome, sir.
Hey, everyone. My name is William Devine. I'm the adjacent property owner actually to the west of Bluefish. Just want to make a few statements before I read my letter. I want to do something, say something about in regards to what RJ Smith said about the master plan, that there are no flaws besides the one that he read for the master plan. I respect and disagree in regards to the eighty-four corridor or not having access to seven forty-seven. I'd also like to make a comment based on Bluewater's attorney. What he said is that the site gives great access to both eighty-four and to Stewart Airport. With that being said, I'll read my letter. I'm the adjacent luxury property owner to the Sailfish Project site and have repeatedly requested a right-of-way or an alternative from the town and Bluewater Industrial Group regarding access to seven forty-seven from the eighty-four corridor property, so an I-two with major access. What major access means is that I have to have, as the property is zoned I-two, I have to have access to either a county or state highway. In nineteen eighty-eight and several times thereafter, being the last time in two thousand and ten, a plan was set forth, a master plan that makes sense and can be implemented for the right promotion to the ever-growing industrial market, a plan that would have saved the boards and residents a lot of heartache and aggravation if only implemented correctly. Over the past year and a half, the question has been raised, what do we do if Sailfish does not grant access for a right-of-way through their property? It's not until now do I hear the conversations focus on the topic after the Sailfish Project having granted its approvals. A town official last night publicly stated that the current properties on I-two along the eighty-four corridor are not consistent with their zoning without access to seven forty-seven, therefore killing the idea of future growth in revenue for the town. Anybody understands what the master plan implements in eighty-four corridor, and I'm sure you understand what I'm talking about. Bluewater is requesting a spot zoning change to allow them to develop, which is currently not in conformance with the town's existing zoning. They have repeatedly denied a right-of-way for access to seven forty-seven from eighty-four corridor properties, and the town does nothing as recourse. The reason given in the DIS for the denial were are somewhat unprofessional and not answered properly. The town loses millions in tax revenue and future revenue because thousands of acres on commercial industrial cannot be developed due to the non-existent access to a state road. The money and effort it would take to revise the master plan can all be avoided with access to seven forty-seven from Maple Avenue. Please do not grant Bluewater. Bluewater's request for zoning change until the town figures out what is best for the residents in regards to future growth and the eighty-four corridor. The town comes first, and so does its future. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Kristen Brown. I'm on Rounds Road. I'm a resident and a business owner. So I understand we're here to address local law number eight to rezone and accommodate Project Sailfish. So my question is, why are we trying to accommodate such a large project to come into our town when our comprehensive plan and zoning is outdated? At one of the recent planning board meetings, Chairman Rieckel stated, "They abide by the tools they are given to review the projects." If they are given a comprehensive plan from nineteen eighty-eight, which does not include the mention of large-scale warehouses such as this, how can we ask them to adequately review these projects? To ensure that the harmful effects do not occur to the neighbors, meaning us as residents directly adjacent to them or downstream. The public hearing advertised as a local law, and my question is, how many of your constituents know about this meeting tonight? Not that it's a change in the local law, but moreover, a site-specific rezoning of an individual project to benefit a large unnamed corporation and not the general public. I urge you to wait on this determination until after the town has the tools to properly review a project of this magnitude and evaluate the cumulative impacts of projects of this scale to ensure the future of this town is a place that we all want to be.
Thank you. Welcome.
I don't want to clear up.
Go ahead. Welcome.
Karina Tipton, Montgomery. This local law is a set of bad compromises. The town board is embarking on a set of bad compromises if they accept this local law. Poor planning decisions are being evaluated as part of this rezoning idea. Bad compromises have to do with the ratables that we're all interested in getting from the town. This compromise we're talking about is sacrificing local business owners who have been paying ratables to the town for the entirety of their time here. Farmers who are next to this property, it's going to impact existing homeowners downstream in the Tinburg watershed, homeowners in the village of Walden who may be forced to boil their water if their wells are overtopped, if flooding occurs based on this huge development. The secret decision has been made by the planning board. There are still a lot of questions that are still open that could potentially impact the residents of the village of Walden. Nothing makes you feel like you live in a third-world country like having to boil your water after it rains every time. Another bad decision, labor, right? Labor's super important. People have a right to work. We're making bad compromises with respect to labor to construct this building. Mr. Stoddard on the IDA has suggested a compromise to local law for the percent of local labor that's permitted to build this building. That's a bad compromise too. This local law will permit that bad compromise to go forward, reducing the percent of local labor even further from what it is already. And then another bad compromise for people that are going to be working in this warehouse after it's built. The documents that the applicant has submitted to the planning board clearly states that the fourteen-hundred people that will be working in this warehouse are going to come from Middletown or Newburgh, and they're going to get there on eighty-four. They're very clear, this isn't going to impact the town of Montgomery. You don't have to worry about impacts to the school system or the police department because everybody who works in this warehouse is going to come from somewhere else. They're not going to live in Montgomery. You're not going to have more students in your schools. You're not going to have to worry about having a housing stock in Montgomery. We're going to get the people from Newburgh. No big deal. That's another bad compromise. We need to permit zoning changes that will facilitate businesses that are investing in our community for the long term. And I'm asking you to consider, who are you making these bad compromises for? A speculative property developer who's probably Amazon, who's had thirteen deaths since two thousand and thirteen in their warehouses, people working in their warehouses? We've heard from the ambulance corps, they can't support that kind of response. And if somebody gets crushed by a fork, they get backed into an parking lot. These are some serious public safety issues that we have. We're going to be adding fourteen-hundred people coming into this warehouse every single day to go to work every day. They're going to be traveling down eighty-four, a road that is already constantly stopped. Again, that's state infrastructure. That's not our purview. That's a bad compromise for us, the people that travel to and from work on eighty-four, the people who have to worry about whether or not they're going to be able to get home to pick their kids up from daycare, from after school in time before it's closed, people that don't have a grandmother at home who can just like jump in the car and go pick up their kid if they're running a little bit late. It's another bad compromise. It's going to affect all of us. You've heard from a lot of residents. You've heard from a lot of other people as well. I'm asking you to consider that this is a local law. Consider how it's going to impact the local people. Thank you.
Thank you. Fourth row?
Come on up, sir. You look familiar.
First time here. I was kidding. Joe Keenan, I live in Montgomery. I consider myself a Colden Hammer. And I got to point a word before I get to my comments. The board has an obligation to run this hearing in a orderly, disciplined fashion. Heckling from anybody should be stopped, and nobody said a word. Nobody hears noise. Everybody has an opinion, the union, the residents, RJ Smith, whoever. I don't know who said it. I heard it. Here comes the noise. That's wrong. Somebody should have said, "We're not going to tolerate that." When Susan spoke that line, you said something to her. So that's wrong.
I'm lost, but what noise?
Somebody said, "When Bev got up, here comes the noise." I heard it.
I didn't hear anything.
Then I will apologize. Bev, you should have said it.
She said it herself.
Because, you know, I'm on the other board on the town, and we all need to be respectful of each other, and that's my position number one. I apologize if I insulted anybody. I apologize.
Don't apologize. Just go roll with it.
I don't care. No, no, no. So I'm trying to learn, so if I'm ignorant, please excuse me, but I got a couple of questions. Number one, the applicant is Bluewater Industries, yes? For the zoning change?
Industries, no. It's an industry.
Or they changed the name. I don't know what they're... Well, it's Sailfish Bluewater, yes? Do they own a property? I don't know. Okay, the property owner-
Which properties?
The property where the change is-
Where they want property there.
Right. Where the change is requesting, it's my understanding, and if I'm wrong, you can correct me, that they don't own the property. So my other question then is, do the town zoning regulations permit a non-property owner to come up here in front of this board, they have to change the zoning? And I'll give you an example. I live in RA two. Maybe I need my zoning changed because I want to build boats. But, you know, there's four houses on my road that are RA two. Across the street, it's I something. County park's there. Then I got the future Baron Road Industrial Park to the southwest of me. So if a non-property owner can come to the board and request a zoning change, I might as well just request a zoning change for all my neighbors. Because why not? Are you going to say no? I don't know. But nobody can answer my question. So maybe it's rhetorical, but if they don't own the property, you know, I just, who's they? I want the board to answer.
I can answer the question. The property-
I can answer the question. The property owners have consented to the rezoning and their consent is part of the zoning condition.
Okay, then the town board should know that, no offense.
They do know it's...
Well, they didn't answer my question.
It is right here on the map.
Okay.
Question, my time is...
They're not answering the question, they're in public comment.
Public comment. I allowed it.
Okay, I'll just comment.
Take it on me. One of the things is my...
My comment's got question marks.
I got your thing today now, hang on. Just to reply to this, when the solar companies come from third world countries and they apply for solar for 25 years on an 80-year-old here, I have a problem with that too. But they're going in front of the IDA and they call it a solar farm, but it's actually a power plant now. We're taxing it as a power plant. So the bottom line is, there's a lot of things like that that happen. So how does a company come from a foreign country and negotiate with an 80-year-old farmer and say, "I want to put solar on your property for 25 years"? It's disturbing to me, but, you know, that's the way it goes. I think, you know, I'm a constitutional, so.
So then indirectly, if I understand right, and you don't have to answer my question, comments. The property owners consented to the change request. I'll leave it at that. So my opinion is, I think you need to stop to stop spot zoning. I said it before. Focus on fixing the comprehensive plan. Focus on fixing the plan, not changing. And I said it in the last public hearing. I don't know what it was for. Might as well just sell Coldham up the farm because if you look at the map, is it behind me? The zoning map? And I think Mr. Devine mentioned it, the I-84 corridor. You know, it's not like other places. There's no side road run down I-84. You got to go in off 17K, you got Little Maple Avenue, you got Little Ridge Road, New Road, Harmony Lane, Baron Road. They're not suited for that. Who's going to build all these roads? So if you make one exception, what happens the next time somebody comes? What I heard today, there ain't going to be a next time. There's no more room to build. I don't know. I'm just against it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. What time do we start? Near there? Five rows back? Six rows back? Seven? Eight? Anybody in the back? To the right, in the back? The side. You got anybody down the side wanting to speak? No? First row? Welcome.
I'm Bernard Montgomery. Really don't have much to say, but I was at that candidate's forum last night. It was pretty good. Learned a lot of things. But the one thing I do want to stress here is that two of the people at that forum are sitting in front of me. Mr. Winchell and Mr. Hoyt. And both of you said that you believe a comprehensive plan should be put in place and in an expedient manner. I agree with you guys. That needs to be done. We have Mr. Dempsey who's stepping down and the rest of the council people that are running, every single one of them agreed with you two. They all think we should have a comprehensive plan. You know, we have so much going on in our township right now. And we have this embattlement with the residents and the applicants and the board itself. Well, this can be resolved if we just put a comprehensive plan and have a vision for our future. It's as simple as that. You don't have to change the zoning for this applicant here. Who are they? You guys run the show. You guys run the show for the residents, not for the applicants. So I am asking you also not to grant this. Let's work on that comprehensive plan. You've stalled it a little bit here. We haven't gotten a committee together yet or nothing. I mean, it's months, months. Why does it take so long? You know, it's mind-boggling to me why it takes so long to put this stuff together. And I think it's crucial throughout our future that you do that. You just have too much on your plate and you really need to get that thing together. We need a comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Left side, you're right. Yes, sir. Come on up. Your next contestant.
Todd Diorio with Hudson Valley Building Trades, represent 28 trade locals in Hudson Valley, about 10,000 members. We started taking some petitions. We have roughly between 1,000 and 1,100 members within the building trades. We started them on Tuesday. These are all signed. We're going to turn them into you guys probably next week when we collect them all. Five locals brought them in today. We have about 150 residents that actually support this project that have already signed. I'm sure we're going to be close to probably collect 700 to 800 petitions hopefully we'll have for you guys. So there is a lot of people. I'm not going to ask everybody in here to get up and speak because it's going to be untimely and we can be here for six months if we want to be. We can bring everybody in. But a couple of comments. You know, we've been very polite to the people in here. We've tried to keep that way even last time they were here. We gave up seats for the people in the community. To knock us as building trades leaders and my people that are here at the trades as corrupt, we're not corrupt. We have a job to do. You know, we want to go out. We want to promote good jobs. We don't promote all projects. There's been developers that have come to us before for support and we haven't supported them. We haven't been on the same page with them on issues. So our job is to promote, create jobs for people, good-paying jobs. Just a couple of things on the petition. I just want to read. "Petition in support of Project Sailfish to the members of the town board of Montgomery, New York, the Town of Montgomery IDA, and the Town of Montgomery Planning Board. I'm a resident of Montgomery, New York. I support the approval of Project Sailfish. I believe that the project will be long-term benefit to the town of Montgomery and its residents. I support Project Sailfish because it is situated to take advantage of the new highway interchange. There's appropriate use to the land next to I-84 and away from the dense residential locations. I believe Project Sailfish is in an area of the town where it won't affect the villages and the general rural character of the town. Therefore, I support the zoning map amendment for the project. I support the near-term creation of construction jobs and follow on business activity supporting the construction project. I support the long-term employment opportunities provided by Sailfish. I vote in Montgomery, New York and will support those public officials who support Project Sailfish. I'm a member of a union affiliated with the Hudson Valley Building Construction Trades and they sign their name to it and their address, so you guys have it." So they're out here. Just a couple other comments. You know, the lawyer addressed the Amazon issue. He had me convinced for a second. But anybody that's going to shop, this isn't going to affect whether Amazon comes here and builds a warehouse. People that shop online, they're going to go online. They're going to shop and their stuff's going to get delivered. It's going to affect the local businesses, whether they build this warehouse here in Montgomery or the warehouse is built in Pennsylvania. People that shop online are going to shop regardless of, so it's not going to affect their business. And on the local labor issue, they beat up Matt Stoddard a little bit on that issue. To explain that the local labor law has some provisions in there that if the project comes in, the subcontractor part comes in less than 20%, or there's a magic number there, they can go anywhere they want. If Matt didn't look for those concessions or we didn't look for those concessions, that work would probably go to an out-of-state or out-of-area contractor. The ironworkers are busy. There's a lot of work, whether they're union or non-union. There's just not enough local ironworkers to build a million square foot warehouse right now. So they're going to need some help on the outside. Most of the other trades won't need it. So that's why that concession was made. And Matt keeps getting beat up on that, so I just wanted to clear the air on that. And we ask you guys today, I mean, if we can, we could go on forever. We can keep speaking. We got to close the public comment period. I mean, we're going to keep coming. They're going to keep coming. I could have people speak. I mean, I think that's part of the delay thing here is to keep this public comment period open. We need to close the public comment period. Thank you.
Thank you. You're on this side. Come towards the back. Come on up. Welcome.
I'm Debbie Drake. I'm a resident of the Town of Montgomery. Lived here all my life. And a couple of things. I am one of the owners of the property. And Sailfish or Bluewater does have permission to represent us on the zoning changes. We've owned the property since 1979. And since that time when my parents originally bought it...
Sorry, can you just step up to the mic? There's deviation with the audio. Sorry.
In 1979, when my parents bought the property, you know, it was zoned always the way I understood it as commercial warehouse. And if you, you know, from 1979 to 2019, you use warehouses, you use fulfillment centers. You know, it's just a change in language now that we have. But anyway, so it's always the promise that 747 was going to be built, you know, to, you know, access this corridor. And the corridor running from, I mean, I don't think the project could be in any better place than where it is on the Town of Montgomery line, close to 84, 87, and the Stewart Airport, and, you know, on 17K also. We have worked with, you know, the project managers, all the property owners have. And we have put together 187-acre parcel. Instead of having individual more warehouses, we combined the 187. We came together as a group to put this together with them. And I think it's one of the better, you know, designs for the town. You don't have to have, you know, the four different properties coming, four different applications. It's all 187 acres together. The amount of jobs that it would create, I think, is very important. Someone says that $65,000 isn't a lot of money. Well, it's a lot of money when you don't have it, or you don't have a permanent job. If you had part-time jobs, you know, there's people that, you know, mothers, you know, husbands, you know, high school kids, college kids, they might want to take a part-time job whatever this warehouse is going to be. And I respect the idea that the tenant or whoever they're going to be putting in there, it's respectful that they don't answer it because of who it's going to be because it's confidentiality. And that's just how it is. If they meet all the requirements, they've gone through a slew of approvals from state, county, you know, DEC, all these approvals. They have really gone through the wringer for the last two years. And I just think that now it's time to close the public hearing. I mean, how many times do we have to come here over and over with the same amount of comments? It's just, at this point, I just wish that you would close the town board meeting and move on, okay? And I hope that you really do support the Project Sailfish. The other thing is, and I go with what the union guy was talking about, that shopping in the area? No. I do it online, you know. I mean, it's just the way it has evolved to that point since, you know, I was a, you know, a high school, you know, student here and to where I have now retired, you know, do I shop in the Town of Montgomery? Probably not. Do I go and eat at the restaurants in all the little, you know, McDonald's, Mayline Diner, all those? You know, absolutely. Those restaurants are places that I would, you know, honor. Do I actually shop in the villages? No, because I don't think that's conducive for my shopping. So I just wanted to thank that and I want to thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Back of the room? Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Jane Farrow, Town of Montgomery. I too would love to see this closed. I would really hope you really look at what the vision will be for our town. Vote no on this and let's get our comprehensive plan together and move forward with more diversified job offerings. Both of my daughters needed to leave this area for their employment, so we're no jobs professional for them. And I think we really need to look at that. We need to diversify what's offered for the young people. Thank you.
Thank you. Move back to room. Sir? Paulie? Just one real quick thing, Mrs. Drake. I kind of, just, I grew on that property, which will drive us directly across the street from this property. And I spent a lot of time as a young man, Mr. Haber, Doc Haber, Morty Haber, and the Haber family. And he's gone and I know a lot of the, Mr. Van Louwen, the other property, you know very well. And Mr. Haber bought that and the McDonald's family had rented a farm in there, probably had run for another 100 years. Ray McDonald was our postmaster in his grandfather's farm. So Morty bought that property in early, I think it was like '70, '71 probably. He always envisioned of some type of commercial warehouse. And I don't know what the zoning laws were in the '60s and '70s, but that was always a, you know, his retirement. And he bought several pieces of property around our area across from Valley Central and other places. And that was the retirement. Mr. Haber is still alive. But I mean, that is, you know, their investment since, you know, the '70s they've been paying taxes on that land. And, you know, it comes close to me. I basically cut a lot of firewood and I sold a lot of firewood as a kid up against your property back then. But we enjoyed that area. I enjoyed that piece of land and all that. Spent a lot of years on it. So it definitely affects the people that have been here. I'm fourth generation. And certainly people bought land, you know, to invest into. That's really, you know, so I'm a little passionate. I'd love to put a farm on that land, but we just couldn't afford it.
But I mean, I just don't think that you can put 187 acres in the Town of Montgomery right now together and minimize, you know, four different other applications and having a site where the location is not in the village, not in the major village, not in the Montgomery village, but it's outside of the village, close to the town line. For myself, who's lived here all my life and I know exactly where you are, I don't think there could be a better location for this. If 747 wasn't built, that's a whole new ballgame. It's a whole new ballgame. But that's what it was. My parents wanted that road to go in there. They did a whole bunch of things, praying or whatever they had to do because like you just said, it was part of their retirement, okay? They both have now, you know, since have deceased and it's, you know, a whole nother ballgame on that. But paying taxes from 1979 today, oh my goodness. I mean, they spent a lot of money to hold on to that property knowing that the town had this property there for commercial reasons. Okay? Whether, you know, it's a warehouse or fulfillment center. We're in 2019, going into 2020, the language, the different, you know, warehouses, fulfillment center or whatever, small businesses. Take a millennium. You think a millennium is going to build, I mean, go shopping in the town or either one of the villages? They're not going to.
All right, hold up, hold up, hold up. Thank you. Mrs. Drake, thank you. I just want to interject my thoughts into it and, you know, I know the neighborhood. I know the people who are there. Actually, Quickway Metal, when Quickway Metal came in, we had to, we cut thousands of hay bales around Quickway Metal. So what I saw, listen. Ma'am, you weren't here? You just come in?
First of all, I'm about a year and a half off from being a millennial and I own a small business in the village. I make my entire income. And I'm glad you don't come because people like everybody else...
Shame on you.
My partner also happens to have been in the carpenters' union for 15 years, so I understand where you guys are coming from, but there's two sides to every story here. I, like most of the people here, understand the need for ratables. As a business owner and a mother, I also understand the need to plan for the future and think 10 steps ahead. I'm wondering though, one thing that still bothers me as I learn about the comprehensive plan and the need for it and everything else that goes along with it, as I understand most of the people in this room, the union workers, the business owners, the residents, as well as the people that are trying to build these companies, such as that line and Amazon. I understand everybody's point. I really do. I'm wondering, why are we hiding behind the veil of ratables and inciting hysteria about taxes and lawsuits when you're not even asking these projects to pay even half of their taxes? If you were a true leader, you would demand that each project pay adequate taxes. In fact, as you clamor and hunt for these projects, promising... promising them water and sewer, while you bend the other one over the barrel to build a larger treatment plant for us, you should be staunchly against the pilot programs to ensure the funding for your beloved water and sewer projects. But you aren't. I have been forced to approach Medline, and now the 17K and Bracken Road attorney, and hopefully Stalefish and Blue Water, Amazon, whoever it is today, by myself to try to communicate directly what residents' concerns are. I have, along with RPM and Scoofis, asked Medline to drop their pilot. I acted as a liaison between all parties on a CBA and a pilot issue. Why? I'm asking them to provide assistance and address the infrastructure and traffic and safety concerns in the villages that these projects are affecting. Why? These villages are paying taxes that go to your projects, your pay, and nobody has even looked out for us. You're about to spot zone to allow for another project so we can have ratables. For what? What is the sense of a ratable if we don't ask them to pay taxes? We don't pass a balanced budget investing in the town's infrastructure, and we don't allocate funds appropriately to complete these projects? We're concerned about economic growth, but only in one area. There's no incentives for the small business owners, no tax breaks for me. The storefronts in the villages are becoming vacant. People are foreclosing on homes, they're renting them out, they're turning them into multifamily homes. So what good are ratables without the full taxes and proper allocation of funds? What good is an economic growth in industry here if there will be less and less residents and taxpayers to support the need for the ratables to fund the schools? What good is the project and the prospect of the ratable if you're not taking into consideration the concerns of your residents? If this is what I'm doing, what are you doing?
Anybody else haven't spoken, want to speak?
Is the area zoned commercial? I mean, is that, it's zoned commercial? And what would the people like to see there?
Sir, if you want to speak, just come up to the microphone.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, just speak to the board, please.
I'm sorry. My name is Charles Vick. Uh, I was curious as to what the people would rather have there other than like a warehouse or something. What other alternative would there be? I mean, that area is just a strip of road. I mean, what are you going to do, put housing there? Offices, I mean, for... Such as? I mean, it's corporate America. I mean, everything is running at a fast pace. I mean, big business owns everything, regardless if it's a small town or, you know, big town.
We don't want a known Montgomery.
Excuse me, sir. Well, I mean, 747, I mean, it, that's, they took away everyone's house on that road just to build that road down. No, I'm not saying it's anyone's fault, but I mean, I mean, I don't think, uh, housing would be appropriate to put in that area. I mean, with the airport in that vicinity, myself, I mean, but, I don't know. That's just my thought.
I appreciate it.
Restaurant?
Anita Falcone, Village of Montgomery, and I have a small business there also. And I have clients that have been coming to me for 15 years. I pay taxes, and they can barely get to my place now. So to answer what the gentleman just asked, what do we want to see there? Well, that's the whole point. We can't even tell what we want to see there because we don't have the infrastructure in place to make a really, um, intelligent decision. That's the whole point. The traffic right now is unbelievable. You cannot get to 17K from many areas when the children are trying to go to school, when people are actually coming into the village to the wonderful businesses that are there. I for one would like to see that stay there. So the point is the traffic and the safety, the ambulance corps. We can't even take care of what we have now. So it isn't a question about, um, who's going to be in there or what the village and the town wants. We don't even have the choice right now to have a part in that, to have a say in that, because we didn't have a comprehensive plan that was updated for any type of new development. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion, entertain a motion, who wants an executive session? Big ol' ice?
I'll make it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.